Yes, Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jubey?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope that your summer months are an opportunity for you and your children to relax from the complexities associated with education in a post-pandemic environment. You all showed a great deal of patience, flexibility, and grace during the last 12 months. On behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you all. The 2021 school year finished on Friday, June 4th, for our students and staff. We all did a fantastic job attending school and pursuing education. Whether in a remote environment or in person, our students and staff demonstrated a determination in finding a way to learn. Thank you to the building maintenance staff throughout Garfield High City Schools for maintaining a rigorous cleaning and disinfecting regimen. Congratulations to our senior class of 2021, who graduated from a remarkable commencement ceremony at Rocket Mortgage Fieldhouse on June 3rd. The graduates showed their strength as a class and their creativity, as well as their positivity, in formally completing their responsibilities as a member of the Bulldog family. You graduate from the Garfield High City Schools with honor and with pride. Congratulations to our graduates and to your families. All the best in your future endeavors. I'd like to thank Superintendent Chris Hankey and his administrative staff for creating and promoting the district's summer enrichment opportunities, all of which have been designed to give children in our community the ability to learn, to stretch, and to grow during the summer months. The curriculum strides being met, along with the interpersonal skills being developed, will only help our students to fulfill their newly-developed strategic plan, "The Portrait of a Graduate," in the Garfield High City Schools. Well done to our families who took advantage of these opportunities. Finally, I hope we all have the chance to celebrate the national recognition of Juneteenth this past weekend. After becoming a federal holiday last week, I am proud of being part of a district such as ours, who takes the time and who makes the actions to uphold and affirm diversity, equity, and inclusion for all. Have a safe, smart, and enjoyable summer. This concludes my report.
Ms. Daniels, Ms. Daniels, before we go into the committee reports, I'd just like to let the public know if they have any comments on agenda or non-agenda items to email me at asluca@ghooldogs.org during the meeting, and we will get their comments or questions up to the board in the appropriate spot of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Sluka. And now to our committee reports. Do we have any reports this evening?
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a report from the Strategic Plan Committee. Ms. King? The Strategic Plan Committee met on June 15th of 2021. We discussed the priorities that are being identified by Mr. Hankey and his cabinet, and they're working to develop them into actionable tactics. We will have quarterly committee check-ins, where we will get updated on the priorities and the tactics, and we will have bi-annual report-outs to the committee. Our next meeting will be in late August, beginning of September. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. King. Are there any other committee reports?
Madam, I do have a report.
Ms. Thomas?
I have a student activities report. The 2020-2021 high school sport seasons have completed, and the teams have already begun their preparation for the next full year. Baseball player Joe Leonard was recently selected as the MVP of the LEO Conference. He batted over 600 on the year and never struck out at the plate this entire season. Major recent purchases include additional game balls for baseball and softball and OHSA tournament intraparties. Congratulations again to our seniors, and welcome back, Mr. Jubey.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Are there any other reports?
Madam President, I have a CBCC report.
Ms. Morrison?
Superintendent Mangus has been having conversations with Senator Sandra Williams regarding the career technical education with the newly-introduced legislation on apprenticeships and funding for short-term buildings. The CBCC will monitor the health and safety over the summer of the students coming back. The last day for the students was 5/28, and the staff's last day was June 1st. And they lifted their restrictive protocols, including requiring masks as June 2nd, and it appears that next year everything will go back to normal operations. There is a Cuyahoga Valley Career Center virtual business fair, so if you go to their website, you can go on that. And their next meeting for their Board of Education will be Thursday, this Thursday, at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Is there any other committee reports?
Briefly, I will report on the Finance Committee. We did have a meeting today, and part of our meeting, we discussed the temporary appropriations that's on tonight's agenda. And we also discussed the budget plan that is currently we're awaiting action from the state of Ohio. Is there anything else you wanted to add to that report, Mr. Sluka?
Yeah, it was a little more colorful, I think, in our finance meeting, but just for the rest of the board, we went over, I emailed today, the NASA, OASBO, and OFAA presentation webinar that was attended on Friday. It was a comparison between the House version of their budget and Senate version of their budget, which were diversely different. So what ended up happening is went to conference committee, and the conference committee has met, and we are getting word that they have come to a decision, and that decision on a final budget will be going to the governor sometime this week. And we're just awaiting word of what that final budget looks like. Just so you know, I mean, the biggest difference was that the House put in place the Fair School Funding Plan that was a three-year project worked on by a lot of school officials and legislative people in the House and around the state, and they incorporated that in their House Bill 110. Well, the Senate cutted that whole version and came up with their own funding formula that was significantly less to public schools. And then what they ended up doing was increasing the voucher amounts for the charter Ed Choice schools. They upped public school per pupil to $6,110, which is a $10 increase per student here. And they upped the biggest jump, they upped the 912 voucher amount to $7,500 per student for high school students. So they upped us $10 per pupil, and they upped the the other charter one high school from $6,100 to $7,500 per pupil. So once again, I think it's an attack by the Senate on public education and the funding of public education around the state. What comes out of conference committee, we'll see where that ends up. Hopefully, it's of benefit, and they move forward the House plan, but we're just cautiously optimistic at this time. But if you have a chance to read over that presentation, there's some stuff in there that is pretty interesting between the House and the Senate versions of budget.
Mr. Sluka?
Yes.
Madam Chair, can I ask Mr. Sluka a question? Mr. Sluka, I didn't get a chance to read it in detail, but with the Senate version and the increase with the charter schools and community schools, is it directly coming? Will it be directly paid to them, or will we have to reimburse as we have in the past?
Well, that is the only saving grace in the Senate version of the budget, and it's also in the House version, so I think it'll be the state will directly fund Ed Choice and charter schools. Now, that will be less of an expenditure burden on us, it absolutely is. But let's take this on the other side of, if you're funding those schools at a higher rate than you're funding some schools, well, that means there's more money going there. That means there's less money in their budget version for these public schools. So either way, I mean, it'll be a benefit for us, but in the long term, we still need funding for our students.
Absolutely.
And that's the biggest one contention that we have as an education community of, how can you just throw away three years' worth of work by reputable people that really did an in-depth analysis of this? And I think the other thing is, and what I'm hearing is that the Senate's version is saying that the state cannot afford the Fair School Funding Plan. It's a six-year implementation, and the cost, the state will not be able to sustain that. But the issue becomes is, the first couple of years, they can't sustain it with the current funding levels that they have. Now, the Senate version, Senate says, well, we're version saving money to the state. Well, it actually is not. Their version actually costs the state higher in the first two-year bi-annual budget than the Fair School Funding Act would have cost. So I'm not sure the justification, but stay tuned, and we'll see.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sluka. Do you want to have any more questions regarding any committee reports that were submitted this evening? Are there any more reports?
I have an additional report.
Ms. Thomas?
The Legislative Committee will meet next Wednesday, June 30th, at noon, our first meeting.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is the presentation on Esser Funds. Mr. Sluka and Mr. Hankey?
Okay. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Thank you for allowing us the time to present to you a budget for the Esser II funds. What I tasked my cabinet with is to come up with some ideas and alignments in the strategic plan. And what we did was, we came up with a worksheet to do that, and we have that in our presentation right? Mr. Sluka and I will probably tag you in this as we go forward. You do have the presentation in front of you, and then for those that may be watching, we have it here. Tonight, we're going to discuss Esser II allocations, planning the Esser II budget and strategic plan alignment with Esser II. Next slide. So what we did was, if you look at the top of each slide, we have what the Esser II money is allowed to be spent on, and we have that broken down per slide. So for this first slide, we have activities to address unique needs of low-income students, students with disabilities, English learners, racial and ethnic minorities, students experiencing homelessness, and foster youth. So in this, we came up with a couple of expenditures here. We have a burgeoning population of ELL students, and these are students that English is not their first language. And so we're looking at possibly a multilingual professional who's fun to be to work with all ELL parents and may not feel that they're important part of the process. The person will have to be fluent in more than one language, such as especially Arabic, Punjabi, and Mandarin Chinese, which is prevalent here in the district. Interpreter services for ELL and special education services to help families for testing IP meetings and meetings with parents. We have school personnel. We tied that to Strategic Plan Goal 2.2, which is provide staff training on cultural competence, humility, and on adapting to differing needs of students in a way that makes all students feel dignified and valued. So that expenditure piece is $168,000. Oh, please stop me anytime. So we have a number of things that are technology-related, because this is a great use of Esser funds, because these are one-time funds. They're not sustainable, so we were able to buy some things and replace some things that need to be replaced. Up at the top, we have developed and implemented procedures and systems to improve preparedness and response efforts of the school district. In the district, well, especially at the board office, but throughout the district, we looked at a system before COVID called Single Wire. And Mrs. Bailey, chime in here in case I don't get this right. But basically, this allows us to send messages to any computer in the district. So for example, if we go into a lockdown and somebody may not hear, a lockdown is, it will shut down the computer. Generally, computers are on in classrooms. We can also work through phone calls. This is especially helpful in our board offices when we have had issues, when we had to call a lockdown, we couldn't. But also, it's going to be throughout the district, correct, Mrs. Bailey? So this is going to be a good system for us to help us with emergency preparedness. We also have a number, we have many cameras in our district, but here at the high school especially, we have some outdated cameras. These cameras are not inexpensive. So to replace all of our original analog cameras is at a cost of $367,000, which will bring us up to the modern standard as far as our camera system goes. And we tied both of those again to 4.3 in the strategic plan. Develop a plan that stabilizes the district's financial outlook and provides the necessary resources to invest in a technology and innovative learning environment while providing the educational programming that enhances successes for students and staff.
Mr. Hankey, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
The cameras, you're talking about the security cameras?
Yes.
Are all of the cameras updated in all of the schools? Or are we just focusing on the high school at this time?
Oh, Ms. Bailey, I believe all the analog cameras are here, correct?
There are some analog cameras still at William Foster and the middle school.
I didn't know that.
We're not updating the digital cameras, but all the old ones at the high school, particularly has the mumps, and they're original to when the building was built.
Okay, so this amount is all of the analog?
All the analog and the digital.
Got you, yeah, thank you.
If I could also chime in, it's, I think, part of the preparedness and the response piece of it is the cameras also allow our emergency service people to be able to come and assess situations and be able to look in to our buildings, retired, a local fire, or in the police department. If they can come in and look in, by having the upgraded cameras, they'll be able to get a clear picture of the situation and go from there and be able to manipulate and do what they can really do about it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were getting all of the analogs.
Yes.
The price for the Single Wire system is that annually?
Ms. Bailey?
This is the initial price, and then there's the maintenance fee annually after that. I don't believe it's $15,000, but I can check that.
Can we afford to sustain that? Do we have funding coming in? Is this so significant?
I think a lot of times, like the Single Wire, and this is the same question I have, I think the initial cost of getting up and running is big, but the annual maintenance fee absolutely will be able to sustain it, because it'll be significantly less than that, I'm pretty sure. The initial cost of implementation, getting it on everybody's computer, the training piece of it, once that's all in place, that's usually the big cost, and maybe just upgrading software.
Thank you.
Next slide, Mr. Sluka, you want to go over this one?
I think it's kind of self-explanatory. I mean, we're still anticipate having the same cleaning supplies moving forward in the COVID environment. We still have the misters, we still have the pump sprayers, the hand wipes. I think we're still going to be doing it. I think once we got into the hand sanitizer, I think students are getting used to it, and I think it's a good health practice to keep that part going. So we will still be getting the cleaning supplies.
Okay. And one of the allowables for COVID is, again, purchase educational technology, including hardware, software, and connectivity for students served by the Board of Education, including low-income and IDDA. So we have a number of items here to keep our Chromebooks that are end-of-life. We have an expenditure there for $160,000. Adult education, or for our
Teachers.
For teachers, excuse me. For the teachers, we have a laptop expenditure to replace outdated equipment. Miscellaneous classroom technology purchases at $25,000. Google Workspace licensing, we were using the free version of Google. This gives us a licensed product with more support and more robust, more features and a more robust system. Zoom licensing, we are licensed now for Zoom. As happened before, we were licensed, you know, sometimes you have limits on amount of people, et cetera, that you can have in these meetings, and the licensing helps with that. GoGuardian is a platform that we have already adopted. We're just going to move this over to Esser. This is very robust monitoring and filtering software that does help us if we have some issues with students using computers in an inappropriate way. And it also, quite frankly, has allowed us to avert some major issues. So network switches are one of the backbones of our district. They're unsung heroes, and they are expensive. So we have a couple of backup network switches for $20,000. If we go on, and again, we tied most of this to 4.3. Go ahead, Mr. Daniels.
I do have a question.
Yes.
So is our goal in the district to have one-to-one for both staff and students?
Yes, yeah, that would be the goal. And you know, and the thing about it is, is that, you know, Mrs. Bailey has talked to me about this. You know, it's just, it's a better idea to have the teachers, and we never really had the funding for it until now, to have them have laptops. Because, you know, we're moving around more, it's more of an interactive type of environment, and this gives us a mechanism to do that. And then Mrs. Bailey comes out with a very comprehensive replacement plan to make sure that we can sustain these expenditures. But again, much like Mr. Sluka said about, you know, getting up and running, getting up and running with the laptops is initially, you know, more costly. But to go on, this is really part of the same page. ClassLink, which is a single sign-on and instant access to all apps and school files for children and for parents and for staff, is fantastic. You know, with a lot of our programs, you have individual passwords and things of that nature. That really helps with it. We're able to replace network switches at Elmwood and William Foster at 15% of the cost, because the federal government will reimburse us for that. So that's at $15,000 instead of a significant more amount of money. Another unsung hero in our technology backbone are UPSs, which keep our systems online in the event of power outages. Art teachers especially, they tend, the software that Apple makes for the creative content areas like art is much better. And so we don't support a lot of MacBooks, but we do for our art teachers and for some of our digital design things that we do. We did put hotspots for families. We have 300 already purchased. We're going to keep that going as we come out of COVID, because, you know, we always know that there might be a need, but we'll see how that goes, that, you know. And we have 100 iPads, is that correct?
Most are for the K-5 teachers. They're going to be doing give-rolls assessments, and they need to do the assessments with the iPads.
And Mrs. Bailey, could you help me with the last one?
Sure can.
Thank you.
So SOAR is our digital library. It's overdrive, which is the Garfield High City company. We have digital books on there for our students, so we're looking to really enhance that library, because they can access it right from their Chromebooks, as well as purchase educational resources for our teachers, so they can read those books as well.
And these all track with 4.3 on the strategic plan. I want to go, I apologize, this slide was inadvertently put in twice. This was what I discussed earlier. Before today, oh, yes, go ahead.
Can we go back to the high school maker space?
Yes. Would you like some more details on that, Ms. Thomas?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we started this spring, Ms. Hager, as well as myself and some other teachers in the building, a lot of, sometimes they can be part of a media center, but they don't necessarily have to, where you actually put resources in a room where different teachers, students can come in and actually make things. Make things with 3D printers, make things with laser etchers, make things with maker space kits where they do electronic circuits. So it ties a lot to sciences and math, and we're looking at actually some other districts in the area that have these already to help with that problem-solving and creativity. So it's a process we just started.
Yes.
Mr. Hankey, with the slide that you said was a repeat?
Yes.
The second slide talks about sign language for professional, a sign-line professional for parent meetings, et cetera, for $15,000. Is that included in the $130,000 on the first slide that we looked at under interpreter services?
Yes. I apologize, we combined a couple of things, and I missed one.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Where am I? There we go, so go forward one more. Okay, as we said about our summer program, we have dueling funding streams for that. We're funding summer programming out of Title I and out of Esser II. So you have summer school salaries and of ESER II. So you have summer school salaries and benefits, summer intervention, K to twelve salaries for our teachers, and then purchase service and materials for our providers. And it lines up right with one point one and one point two, where we're looking at yearly academic progress in math and reading, and opportunities for creative and engaging assignments. So that, that's where that came from. Okay. We were able to move some curricular things over out of the Teaching and Learning Department onto ESER, which hopefully will give us a bit of a savings from the general fund, right, Mr. Sluka? So Math is our benchmarking system. We do it three times a year, and that's where we measure student growth. So we're, we're going to move that over to ESER for now at forty thousand. Reflex Math is a research-based math program for grades two through six, and that program's at nine thousand. The other thing that I tasked the Teaching and Learning Department is to put a number, and we haven't completely planned it out yet, for a robust tutoring program to address learning loss during the, this coming school year, at the least. So these payments would be, you know, to teachers for tutoring program after school. Additionally, we're looking at some after-school social, emotional learnings, learning programs, much like some of our, our camp providers had, to do some of that after school. So we're kind of expanding, not expanding the school day in, in terms of like the regular schedule, but we're expanding our offerings of our programs. We hope this is going to help with learning loss. I think it's going to be important, and we'll be working out the, out those details from there. Mr. Sluka?
Hi. School facility repairs and improvements. I threw in a bus purchase here because I think it, not as a school facility, but when we talk about COVID-related items, having updated buses with better air circulation, air conditioning, I think it all falls in line with this. So we need to get new buses. The state budget will not allow, it's not going to give us any money for buses. So we think that this will fall under this category, and we put it under the strategic goal of four point three is having resources available to pay for such items and saving the resources in the general fund, we would add a purchase out of the general fund. While I think this is a stretch, I do think that we can make a good argument that this is a COVID-related purchase, with new buses and a new required air quality and everything else moving forward. And the next one is middle school, four point one. We targeted, yes?
About how many buses will that-
Three. Three buses. One will be a handicap bus, two eighty-four passenger, it's a seventy-two passenger handicap bus.
Will these be in addition to our fleet or will we-
Well, there, there are a couple buses that, let's just say that they passed inspection this year, but by the, you know, very minimal margin, and we don't think that they're going to pass again next year. So we're going to-
So these purchases is to replace?
Well, to replace two of them, one's going to be in addition.
Okay.
Yes. Especially the handicap bus, but the handicap bus will still have, be able to drive, but it's, it's, a lot of times fixing the ramps and the lifts, lift stations and everything, it's just starting to get, with anything you use a lot, it's starting to see its, yeah, starting to see its end of life. Next one up is middle school. We're targeting two and a half million to the middle school. We are working on a plan right now to address the middle school, and it's perfect timing to target this area and move it forward. This is just a targeted amount. What we are looking at doing is, what this ends up doing is ESER funds that we can take away. We're still part of trying to decide whether you can use ESER funds to build new, as part of our ideas, what we're going to do with the middle school. We're pressuring to do an assessment in the middle school. I put that in my today memo. We're going to do an assessment of the middle school. We were just sitting in on our retreat on Thursday with our attorney, who says a lot of districts are now inquiring whether you can use ESER funds to build new. So what we did is we targeted some of this money to put towards the middle school, whether for renovations or building new. We don't know that yet. Hope we might to at least set aside something and have it ready to go as part of our ESER budget, and that's where we target two point five million for the middle school. And then the other one, instructional supplies, that's, gets more towards principal stuff.
We were able to purchase a work, a simple solution, was it, was it, Mr. Pat, was it every child, every child K eight, thank you, received a Simple Solutions math workbook for the summer. A couple of reasons for that. First of all, nationally, according to MAP data, mathematics seems to be the place where the students are having more learning gaps. So we thought that it would be good to have something for them. The Letters Professional Development and Teachers K eight, this is a program that we've had for a number of years for literacy, and it, I believe it's in its final year this year. Is that correct? Yeah, letters, yeah. Okay. So we have, this is a good opportunity to put an expenditure that's relatively sizable at a hundred and fifty thousand onto the ESER funds. And again, addressing the strategic plan, we're looking at one point one and one point two with, go ahead.
Last year of the training for the teachers.
Last year of the training for the teachers, thank you.
We've been instituting it, maybe we completed their training, but William Foster and Elmwood are a couple of years behind, and then we put a pause on the festival pandemic and the COVID, so they, teachers will continue their training this coming up school year.
Thank you.
I did have one question.
Yes.
For Mr. Sluka.
Yes.
Not requesting total details, but what are you targeting with the two point five million in the middle school? Like what type of renovations did you decide to renovate?
Well, right now, we're going to target two areas. One is, we're going to target the windows, for sure. That's part of it, targeting windows, and the feasibility of upgrading the HVAC system to include air conditioning, but I don't think that between those two items, two and a half million will not get it done. That's why we're looking to do the assessment. But if we do do renovations, we might need to alter this budget, but we have ESER three coming and some other federal funding. So that's why I think doing this assessment is, it comes at a great time so we can get more definitive ideas of what direction we want to go in, how much money we can target for ESER to accomplish that whether it's renovation or building.
And these renovations of the middle school, once we've developed that assessment, will these renovations be able to be done while school is in session, or will we have to wait until summer?
We're going to have to wait, wait till next summer.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide, Mr. Sluka. You want to take this one?
Yeah, this is the last one. The caveat of any activities necessary to maintain the operations and continuity of service in the LEA, continuing to employ existing staff in the LEA Local Education Agency, as elaborated below. This is the catch-all. I was doing a presentation to the leadership group, and my only caveat to this, I targeted some money here, and it goes to four point three of saving resources in the general fund to fund the strategic plan initiatives by shifting some of this, some of these expenses to the ESER. These activities have not been fully defined by OBE and the federal government, so pretty much it's a free-for-all of what various districts are charging here. I'm using it to, what I call continuing to employ existing staff and to reimburse the substitutes that cost. So what it's doing is transferring some of our existing expenditures out of the general fund and offsetting those into the ESER funds that we were targeting, the remaining dollars of the other areas to this, this piece. And what this allows us to do, it gives us some breathing room in the general fund, as we saw in the forecast, as this diminishing balances. So this gives us some breathing room to be able to provide the resources that are funded by ESER to fund some of the strategic plan initiatives that we identified moving forward.
Okay.
And then, yeah, and all this comes up to our allocation of seven point one nine nine four, nine nine million, or nine thousand, or nine dollars.
President Daniels, I thank you and the board for your time. Is there any additional questions?
I do have one. As far as the expenditure for continuing to employ existing staff, we know that with our students coming back, there's a tremendous gap, and maybe in particular, our younger grades. Have we considered, or is it, have, have we considered allocating some of these funds to possibly bring in aides or additional classroom staff support to kind of provide additional support and instruction in the classroom? I don't know if we could like, go do a ESC to get some, you know, classroom aides, but could some of this funding be used to kind of put more supports in classrooms, in particular, our younger grades, even, you know, for one school year, and, you know, to help us get through this gap? I mean, I just wondered if that was something that could be considered or have been considered, or do you guys think that would even be a benefit to our students being successful after returning to school after a pandemic?
Well, the question is, not sure. We, I think we need to look at the gaps first. I know, I do know that tutoring never hurts with our, with our licensed professionals, but I think, I'd like to take a close look at where, where things are. We're able to, you know, go, especially with aides, we're able to hire, you know, at any time of the year. So I think I'd like to have a look and see where things lay, especially after we first do the MAP and benchmarking, figure it out.
And Mr. Sluka, would that possibly, if we're able to do these things, would that possibly be a place where we can use that expense with these ESER funds?
Absolutely. Yeah, and that's why I, so when you say continuing to employ existing staff, absolutely, this is kind of the catch-all that we are targeting, that we can kind of massage that to whatever the needs are for, that are identified by Mr. Hank and the administrative team as we move forward. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions regarding Mr. President's presentation this evening? With no questions, Mr. Hank and Mr. Sluka, thank you very much for this presentation. It was very informative, and thank you guys for diligently planning out the success for our students and the allocation of these funds.
Thank you, President Daniels.
And Mr. Hank, when you are ready, your report.
Yeah, let me turn the lights back on.
Thank you.
Okay, President, President Daniels, ready?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I'd like you to give a heartfelt welcome back to Mr. Joe Jubey. Joe, you know, you've always been just an absolute staunch supporter of Garfield Heights City Schools, of our students, of our, of our teachers, administrators, and everybody that works for our schools, and it's, it's just an absolute pleasure to have you back. Thank you, sir. In a unique and memorable ceremony, the Garfield Heights City Schools formally recognized the graduating senior class of 2021 at Rocket Mortgage Field House on June third. The ceremony was superbly planned and unfolded with great honor and tribute for our graduating seniors. Special recognition to Ms. Hager and her staff who played a significant role in preparing this year's commencement amidst the complexities of the coronavirus. Best of luck to the class of 2021 and your expected future endeavors. Though it's summer, Garfield Heights City Schools continues educating children through its summer enrichment opportunities. Blended English, language, arts, along with STEM and math skills during a portion of the day, along with teamwork and fun activities as well, our children are receiving a strong combination of real-life skills with academic proficiency. I am happy to report to the board that things are going quite well with our summer program. More updates next month. As the Garfield Heights City Schools closes out this past school year and begins to look at the 2021, 2022 school year, please be advised that the district's plan is to resume five-day-per-week in-person learning this fall. While all this is subject to change, it is our intention to continue pressing forward to as much normalcy as possible. The district will continue posting updates regarding our plans and public health guidance as soon as it is available. In addition, the Garfield Heights City Schools leadership will continue implementing its newly adopted strategic plan as year one will continue with the start of 2021, 2022 school year. Our administrative team, excuse me, our administrative team plans to begin closely monitoring progress and reporting to the community about our progress and the various action steps associated with and outlined within our strategic plan. Finally, the district recognized June eighth this past, after its official enactment as a federal law. Going forward, the Garfield Heights City Schools will look to add and develop ways to celebrate this milestone day of freedom, a trace back to the end of the Civil War, of course, which is perfectly aligned with our unity and diversity portion of the strategic plan. Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of Education, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hank. Is there any questions relative to Mr. Hank's report this evening? With no questions, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is remarks from the public regarding agenda items. Mr. Sluka, do we have any remarks this evening?
No one has signed up for presenting.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, can I have a motion to, can I have a motion to approve the items outlined in section nine of our agenda this evening?
So.
Second, Mr. Sluka, that was moved by Mr. Jubey, and that was second by Ms. Thomas. Can I have roll call, please?
Go, go, please, Mr.-
Yes.
Sorry. Just a quick comment on the, the items here. Three of the items are for budgetary compliance to temporary appropriations. We cannot spend money in July, August, September unless we have a temporary appropriation in place, the full term is in place in September. That's why we do temporary by law. The budget amendment, budget amendments, appropriation amendments are required because Ohio law sets that at the end of the fiscal year, expenditures and any compromises cannot exceed appropriations. So we needed to amend some of the budgets, mostly in some of the grant funds and in the general funds for the legal level of control, what I said earlier, the legal level of controls, what the original appropriation statute says. So we need to do that. I think the highlight here is that at no time do we need to increase the general fund appropriation total. We just needed to amend some of the line items for budgetary control in the general fund. Some of the grant funds needed increases only due to getting more money into grants, so we need to put that in there. And then the last one is transfer in advances. Ohio law says that we cannot have a deficit fund balance in any fund at fiscal year end. Some funds need a permanent help, which is a transfer to make sure that we're in compliance. Other funds, such as grants where we don't get the money to have to be spent, that we are advancing to ensure budgetary compliance, and then when that money comes in, it advances that in the general fund.
Is there any questions relative to the discussion? With there being no further discussion, Mr. Sluka, can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Jubey?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Can I have a motion to waive the reading of items, can I have a, a motion to waive the reading of items on our agenda ten through seventeen? Second.
That was moved by Mr. Jubey, and that was second by Ms. Morrison. Is there any discussion on any of those items prior to roll call? I do want to make one comment relative to item- I do want to make one comment relative to item. Item number 17. I just want to thank you guys for this new curriculum that you're implementing at the school district regarding music and arts. For number one, the district on last week put out a PSA about the impact of arts in our district and how we prioritize it. And so, when I went and looked up this curriculum that we're voting on today, this curriculum really hallmarks on equity and culture and diversity. So, I thank you guys for really streamlining the new curriculum that you're bringing to our students through the lens of equity, diversity, and even culture. I'm excited for the students to have this opportunity, even in our younger grades, to explore the arts. I hope that this, this is most definitely the district to cultivate that for our students. And I just, I just wanted to make, make that comment relative to this curriculum. And I thank you guys. Is there any other discussion regarding items?
President Daniels, if I may, I'd also like to thank Mrs. Ryse and also all the music educators who worked together to do this, which took a months-long process to that and go over and come up with a curriculum that would be beneficial for all of the children.
Great, thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The community and board members, I do encourage you to go on their website. They have a lot of resources, and I was just truly impressed this level of curriculum that is going to reach our students in the district. And if there's not any other discussion, can I have roll call, please, Mr. Saluka?
Mr. Juby?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Saluka, are there any remarks regarding miscellaneous items?
No one has sent me an email asking to pay for our.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, the Board of Education, I'm asking for a motion to enter into executive session to discuss superintendent and treasury evaluations this evening.
So moved at 6:56.
Thank you. In a second, please. Second. Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Mr. Juby at 6:56 PM, and second by Ms. King. Can I have roll call, please?
Mr. Juby?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.